We call this meeting Lima City Council to order. Begin tonight's meeting with invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come before you to do the business of the city. We ask for your guidance in our hearts and our minds to do the right thing by our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Ms. Crayer.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. There is no public hearing or papers to the floor, consent calender.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that item B be received and filed, and item A be received, filed and approved.
Second.
Move the motion, and the second is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I may the communication number one be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Auditor regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with Perry Protec.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
God.
Mr. President, I may the communication number two be received, filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Martin and Chief Black requesting legislation to enter into an agreement with Cost Recovery Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number three be received and filed, and be referred to the Finance Committee.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three and refer it to Council's Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Reinecke Ford Lincoln.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes, I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to submit a bicycle-friendly community application.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Law Director regarding legislation to amend the strength ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move the communication number six receive and file, legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation for compliance report change order.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I may the communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the...
Mr. McLean. An authorized legislation from the law director. It's just a change order.
Says that the mayor has authorized the legislation. First line.
But we don't have legislation on.
I suppose you don't have to, because the mayor can always authorize them. In fact, as acting mayor, you yourself now did.
Yeah. Signed it and everything.
But it didn't make it to the law department in time.
So it's authorized, it'll be on the next meeting.
You have to let us know.
I'll talk with the utilities people to make sure that they further the communication in the future, Mr. Geiger. Motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer to St. Gage LLC to 27 South Main Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight and authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objections. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have the Finance Committee.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Finance Committee met on July 26 in these chambers at 6:00 PM. The agenda was the ongoing administrative and elected official salaries discussion. This was the third meeting as it hit stating committee, but out of this committee came legislation that adjusts the administrative salaries going forward as they become vacant and a replacement is looked for. The administration is allowed to hire a new person up to 90% of the current outgoing base salary of the present occupier of that position. The motion was made to prepare the legislation, which is on tonight's committee. It passed three to zero, and as members of council and administration got copies of the minutes, I... And the issue for the elected official still stays in committee. I move that the committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Finance Committee report as submitted by Councilor Adams. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just had a couple things to say. You guys did a great job, Sam, Teresa, and Ms. Miles. This is a, you know, you guys taking on this. A lot of cities just letting it lay and continue debating about it and saying that they're tired of seeing this and that. Instead of send now, the committee got together, put together, this is what you guys see, this was fit for our city. Good job, guys. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication, I'm sorry, ordinance 163-16.
This is a second reading establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move that ordinance 163-16 be defeated.
Second. The motion, the second, is to defeat ordinance 163-16. Is there any discussion? I've got a question. Is this issue going to remain in committee? Are the committee going to meet on it?
Still in committee.
Okay. Do you plan on setting a meeting tonight or next week?
Well, we have a little... Ms. Odom is on vacation when we plan to have this meeting, so I have to work it out with the new committee member.
Okay, very good. The motion, is there any other discussion? The motion, the second, is to defeat ordinance 163-16. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
No.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
No.
The ordinance is defeated by a six to two vote. Ordinance 164-16.
Lugging special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move that ordinance 164-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 164-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 164-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 165-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Perry Protec.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 165-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 165-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'd like to ask the auditor, this not to exceed, is this a yearly or quarterly or...
Mr. President.
Mr. Bartel.
That's a yearly amount, and that is the amount of the contract.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 165-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 166-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Warren Fire Equipment.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance number 166-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 166-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 166-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 167-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio Law Enforcement Support Office.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance number 167-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 167-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Wasn't this the communication that was referred to the Finance Committee?
No.
No?
No.
Uh, no.
Listen for Lima Police Department to receive surplus.
Oh, okay.
Just the other one.
No. The item that was referred to the Finance Committee was in reference to billing for non-EMS police fire traffic crash response.
All right, thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
I've been saying.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 168-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 168-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Reinecke Ford Lincoln for the purchase of a 2017 AWD Ford Escape.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move that ordinance 168-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 168-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 168-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 169-16.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $22,850 for the purpose of paying the property owner's portion in anticipation of the collection of special assessments of the cost of constructing sidewalks at various locations in the city, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, in the manner provided in Resolution 115 and Ordinance 115.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to accept the fiscal officer's certificate.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to approve the fiscal officer's certificate. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Gordon.
Mr. President, I move to pass ordinance 169-16 on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 169-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 169-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 170-16.
Authorizing the mayor to submit a bicycle-friendly community application to the League of American Bicycleists.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 170-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 170-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 171-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 172-16.
Amending Section 244.257 on codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 172-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 171-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 172-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Miscellaneous business, we start with Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know some folks might have seen that in the newspaper after 22 years of coaching that I retired from coaching the Lima Warriors. And it was on the radio and everything the other day, but as of 5 o'clock today, we found out that through another team folding that was in the playoffs, that the Lima Warriors will be going to Athens, Michigan this weekend and playing in a surprise playoff game. So, yeah, all of a sudden, yeah, I've been suspended from having my coaching retired.
Is that a retire, rehire?
Yeah, it's a retire, rehire.
I don't like that.
Yeah, although usually I'm not really fond of those things, and since I don't make any money at it.
That's a principle.
Yeah, so...
I've got to say, the Warriors have that sneak attack thing.
They have that sneak attack thing, and so hopefully our team can represent well in the playoffs. We've been doing better here at the end of the season, and so I'm kind of excited about it. And the only other thing that I have is to remind people to be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. Northside Neighborhood Association will have their meeting on the 16th at 7:00 PM, and that's in the church across from...
St. Mark's.
St. Mark's.
St. Mark's.
St. Mark's, across from the school on Metcalf Street. Show up, bring your concerns to us. That's the only time that we get to meet and have some interaction with our constituents sometimes, and I do appreciate that once in a while. So if you have any concerns, that was a good time with the COP officer being in that building. It makes it nice for him to communicate with you also, so... And the second thing, I'd like to talk a little bit about the people of Lima. People of Lima that have been taking food over to the police department, have been doing it to the sheriff's department. Those acts of kindness are not forgotten. I think those are excellent, excellent things to do, and I encourage the people of Lima to continue doing it. I think that overall, the officers appreciate that as much as a thank you, because sometimes they're so busy, they don't get a chance to sit down and eat at a certain time. They may be busy through their lunch hour, and then when they get a chance to have a piece of pizza or even a cupcake, they think of that, and they're very appreciative of that. And I know the chef's department is the same way. Not only ask that, to continue doing it, I would like to see the people bringing and using our local restaurants, have them deliver the food, because I'm sure that sometime or another, they're maybe concerned of what's delivered and who it's delivered by. So that's all, the only concern I have. I think it's a wonderful program. I think that anyone and anyone that can give to that and continue doing that is well worth your effort, and I appreciate it, and I know the police department does, and so does the sheriff's department. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe.
Yes, just two things this evening. I want to thank Kurt Neumeyer for taking care of a selected area on Main Street in the 700 block that allows businesses that are in that area now to have some available parking, and he did that very expeditiously, and I just thank him. The businesses called me earlier last week and asked if I would thank him, and I just wanted to do it publicly. And it feels good when residents ask for certain things and were able to move in a quick manner and take care of it, so they really truly appreciate the city's speedy work. Number two, there was an incident that took place this evening for those that said they would watch tonight. What I am going to do is allow the chief to do his job, and I just ask that you be patient, and the results will come out, and we'll go from there. But if you do have concerns, I ask that you come see me, and we'll write those down, and we'll hand them to the chief, and we'll do it in decency and in order. The third thing that I would like to say is be careful. Last Monday night in the north end of town, there was a couple gentlemen who were going around robbing people, and our officers were out looking for them, and it was kind of a scary situation. And parents, even though your children aren't in school, I cannot understand for the life of me why children under the age of 18 are still out at 1, 2, and 3:00 in the morning, but they were, and these children could have been snatched up very easily by these two individuals. So I just ask that use wisdom, and used to be a song back in the day that said the freaks come out at night. I believe that's true, but I would hate to see anything happen. There have been a lot of reports on Facebook, for those of you that keep up with Facebook, of individuals on the east side of town approaching vehicles and asking individuals, they need a ride here and there, or would you just come with me and show me? I'm sure the chief has heard about it. But it come to find out that one of the individuals I know is dealing with sex trade. Okay, so ladies and men, but especially ladies, be very careful when you're out and about, and to the parents, please make sure. Our city has a curfew that has been established, and please respect that. And at this time, he didn't know I was going to do this, but chief, at this time, if you would, please come and give the curfew hours if you know them, so individuals understand that you are breaking the law if you're out at that time.
Mr. President. Actually, what I would recommend for people to do is to go onto the city's website, because the curfew times are listed there, and the curfew times change both at June 1st and September 1st, and they're also different based upon age 13, 15, you know, below 13, 13 to 15, and 16 to 17. So rather than trying to repeat it here and having people watching TV trying to write it down rather quickly or anything, the easiest thing goes for them to go to the city's website, which, just as a reminder for anyone that might be watching, is www.cithole.lima.oh.us.
Thank you, chief. And one last thing, with school around the corner, I ask that you have an eye, look, be cautious. Parents, if you've never worked in the city school system or any school system, one of the worst things in the world for a teacher to deal with is a child that is tired and they have low performance. I'm asking you, it is time to get them ready now when it comes to going to bed at a good hour, so they can be ready to learn the following day. Start letting their body get adapted now. Just be a responsible parent and get them into bed. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Ms. Crayer.
Mr. President, first of all, I would like to start by thanking the chief for... thanking the chief for bringing back the neighborhood policing program. My COP officer, who you can find him at the Bradfield Center, has been very helpful. We are planning some great things for that community this fall, and he has put the work in for fun events, and it's not easy always, but the other thing he's done, he's also paid attention to some of the requests we've had our neighborhood and been very diligent to communicate with myself, communicate with the neighbors. I appreciate all of the, his sergeant and all the people that have participated in paying close attention to what our asks are. It's been very, it's been quite a relief to know I can call him and get results, whether it's 24 hours later when he has a result, or he spends time discovering, looking for answers. It's been very, it's been quite a relief to know I can call him and get results, whether it's twenty-four hours later when he has a result, or he spends time discovering, looking for answers. So, that's Officer Wireman, for anybody who would like to congratulate him, and just being a great police officer. He's wonderful for the community, but he's also wonderful as, you know, just being helpful. Ms. Odom, well, she was nice enough to hustle up here. If you happen to have the Good Neighborhood Guide at home in your kitchen drawer, or you can stop by and pick one up from the city building, the curfew hours are printed, so that could be helpful for all of you, especially if you have sixteen to seventeen-year-olds. It does stop at midnight, and I know I have also seen minors out past midnight, and I ask myself the same question, what are you doing out? Do you know the risk that you're in? And you could be, and should be held accountable for that, so. I believe that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I received a call from a constituent who was having a garage sale, and she was calling to say that her signs had been removed from where they had placed them in the grass area, was her message, and I thought, well, she's put them in the right-of-way. And when I returned the call and we were talking, that is exactly what had happened. She claimed to have read the information, saying you can't put them on poles, and things like that, but nowhere did it say, "Not in the right-of-way." I talked to Mr. Elstro this morning, because I left him a message last week. He obtained her application, and on the permit, as well as the application, it states very clearly about the right-of-way. And I was going to ask Mr. Elstro to come up and speak on that, because of other events that were coming up here in the next few months.
Mr. President.
Mr. Elstro.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. This probably is a timely issue, because as we all are full aware, there is an election coming just a few months from now. And there will be a lot of desire to put not only political signs out, but we will continue through this year with the garage sale season, probably about halfway through with that. We also see a lot of commercial signs going up within the right-of-way. And it's an opportunity to us, for us to be very, very clear. Local ordinance does prohibit against putting personal items and signs within the public right-of-way. Should you elect to put your garage sale sign in your yard, that is permissible. If you decide to display your preferred political candidate in your own yard, that is certainly acceptable. But any signs within the public right-of-way will be picked up by the street division and taken to 900 South Collin. People sometimes get confused exactly where the right-of-way is. We tell them for convenience, any place between the telephone poles is typically right-of-way. And if those neighborhoods with sidewalks, you're probably safe if you put that sign, say, three or four feet behind the sidewalk. Anything closer to that, or within the tree line is clearly in the, within the right-of-way. Anything on a signal pole, a light pole, a power pole, a street sign, is clearly in the right-of-way. So, we would appreciate if people would refrain from that. We try to give heads up to those people doing garage sales, by virtue of, if you go online or fill out an application, you have to check a box saying you have read the section of the code, saying that advertising within the right-of-way is prohibited. Also, right on the home sale, garage sale permit, it does state very clearly not to put anything in the right-of-way or on poles, and we even highlight the section of the rules per the, per the local code, that tells people specifically to keep items out of the right-of-way. Should your signs be picked up, and you want to try to retrieve them, you should contact the street division at 419-221-5165. You can ask if your signs are there, and if so, you can come down during regular business hours and retrieve them. Thank you.
Mr. Elstro.
Mr. Nixon.
You were trying to say between telephone poles, I think you meant between the telephone pole and the street.
Correct.
Right?
Thank you, sir. I was, I was assuming there was poles on both sides of the street, so.
Well, in some places there are, but if you come back behind the telephone pole, because there's no curb or sidewalk.
Yes, but thank you for that clarification. If you stay on the far side of the pole, away from the street, you should be safe. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I've got a couple things. First of all, I want to thank everyone that donated air conditioning, and they showed their hometown pride. We got it from Vanworks, Walpark, Pride'sville, Canton, people just came, we asked for sixty-five, we got a hundred and fifty. And here's a brand-new air conditioner. People just bought them and brought them, saying, "Come pick them up." So, it's so great, and I agree with Sam, though, you know, helping one another out, this was all about. You know, when we had to send the water to Flint, Michigan, boom, we had everybody helping out. So, we showing our hometown pride there, and I appreciate it so much. I know I'm still getting calls, though, but the air conditioning is done, now we can't, we bought Mars out, we bought Minar's out, we bought Lo's out, so we all done. We can't find nowhere else. We're definitely looking for more, it's no more air conditioners. They done, the season's over with, but we got them to the people that really, really need them, we feel, and I know it's more people out there, though. I know, but I got picked up two new ones, so I know the two people will be getting them tonight when I leave city council, because they can't afford them, and lack, I ran out of them, so we came up to it, and I appreciate all of that. Also, we will be, we have our medical marijuana survey, I'll be getting to city council. I should have gotten to you guys early. I just looked in, seen them was in my bag, let you guys see them, and see how you guys like, well, I wrote down the research on that, and a lot of folks been taking the surveys. I will be giving some percentage out next Friday, telling how many came in, and we've been going out and about, starting this weekend, we get out and about in different places, and I know a lot of folks been calling from different areas. I'm trying to keep it in Lima a little bit there, but I know outside, outside counties want them too, but I'm trying to keep them separated, so we can let our city council know what our people want in this, in the city of Lima, because we the one will be making that decision, what to put them at, and how they feel about it, so. But I still want to hear from you guys from the outside, too. Also, the neighborhood association, what I'm working on, we've been some of the neighborhood associations, I'm going around talking to some of the leaders that have been in the past, trying to get them to come back, till we reorganize some of the areas. You know, we down to two of them right now, and I want to go back out there and get them back going again, and tell them what the good things going on. And with the neighborhood association, I know in October, they're going to Champagne, so we are going to be looking for some neighborhoods, we're going to be doing some sponsorship, getting some of the people down to Champagne. Over the years, we've been well-represented, you know, well-represented from Lima, and this year, we want to send a lot of folks down there, so we're going to be looking at some companies, so we can send at least three from each one of these neighborhoods, get them down there to represent Lima. I will be looking at a proposal, though, and I'll be bringing the city council, researching it right now, about vacant houses. And a lot of folks, I gave them some great ideas, what they want to see, with some of the houses that they can work on, that they have the money to fix, you know, and I know we would need an inspector to go in there first, to check it out first, and make sure it can be fixed up, or how much money it will take. If I know we can give, a lot of city councils will say, "If it can come down, I want it down now." I don't want to wait, because it's been there for a while, but some of the folks saying that, "Hey, this is the way I can get, have my own house. If I come up the money to fix it, will the city waive the taxes and let me live there?" Yes, it's a win-win for us, because they be paying taxes, and they be living the city limits, we'll have a vacant lot there. And you want, the future won't downsize, our war will come in the future. So, it's, it's a lot of details in it, so I'm researching a little bit of it, and I've got some friends in Middletown, that they're working on it, and some friends in Toledo that they working on some, so I'm, I'm trying to catch Amy before she exit out the door December thirty-first, and see could we get something, and let city council know about it, and bring some good ideas up. But I, I let people know, I don't want these houses up. There got to be a guarantee that these houses be down. I don't know the codes yet and all that, I'm just throwing this out there. So, I haven't researched all that yet, and see could we do this? I haven't met with the law director yet, this just came to our mind, some of the people was talking about it, and I, and I'm one of the ones that love the reguillotine, and keep the neighbors in the neighborhoods, you know, and not, we got seven houses getting torn down on that block, and we don't have nothing built there for a while. So, this going to work out, it got to be some good, make sure we got the teeth and nails, got some teeth in it, and I know Howard and Amy going to be the one, the law director going to play a big role in this, if we can make it happen, and of course, city council. But it's going to be a win-win if, if we get all the proper stuff followed there. And I know, we was talking there pre-council, about the police officer, and I appreciate two of the police officers did a great job, they did a great job. We had, they had the, the, the block party, and I know that it was not approved to have it, but they had the block party, nothing went down. I was so happy that nothing went down there. We had lots of folks, and I could say over a thousand people's out there, and it was all coming around, and nothing happened that day, so I kept my finger crossed, and get out there. We had good officers came, so I just drove around, and they, and they knew some of the people, they weighed at them and talked to them, you know, so we had a good day that day, and I'm glad all of them dispersed and went home, and everything went all right. So, I give it ups to them, and thank them for what they did, but hopefully, they do it at the park next year. We got a beautiful park out there. Put your tents out there, have a good time out there, because I know a lot of folks was complaining about it in the neighborhood, and because they didn't want to be blocked out. So, I'm hoping that, I'm going to speak with a committee member this week, this weekend, and ask him, could we put it out in the park, and I think it'd be a fair share. And I want to thank everyone for giving kids school supplies. I mean, we have a host of people been giving out school supply. No kid should not have no school supplies. New Life Church, New Life Church gave out. A lot of churches been giving out, everybody been showing their hometown pride. No kid should go without any school supplies. We got, we're giving out this weekend again, at Berkeley King Park, be more given out. So, please come out, I know some of the people got a lot of kids, come out, look at your list, see what you need, because I know everybody got their lists already, let's get these kids, let's, let's get the stuff for the kids, and show our hometown pride. Again, I thank everyone who gave a donation for the American, I know a lot of you guys don't want to give your names out, you went out and bought them and brought them to me, and I appreciate you, and everybody I hand that air conditioner to, they smile, they were so happy, and they say, "Everyone, you're going to be blessed for bringing them out." And I mean, it took a lot of counties to come out and do that, and I just, I just feel so good about that, you know, that anytime we, in the needs of something, anytime they go out there and need it, they always come out and give it, from the water, and the water was in Flint, Michigan, we brought so much, you know, water maker donate the truck, sent it down there, I mean, it's just so much good things going on. And Ms. Neeper, who went on internet and helped out with that, and brought in air conditions for that, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that we showing that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles.
I'll try to be a little bit shorter than Derry here.
I always be too long, I'm trying to cut it.
But I, I do want to continue what Derry mentioned of about dilapidated homes and homeowners. I was, one of my, two of constituents in my, in the seventh ward called me, one on Jamison and one on Cable Road, and their concern were homes that were beside them that were abandoned, rodents were in there, and sometimes the grass was overgrown, and they wanted to know what could they, what could they do. The family on Jamison had been in their home for forty-three years. Their home was immaculate, I mean, they're, it's a beautiful home right down the corner of Jamison and, and Rice, and it's right across from the school. And he is just, he and his wife, I talked with them for an hour and a half in the living room, and they kind of told me about, you know, you know, that house when they purchased it, they purchased it because their kids were in school, and they wanted to be near, at that time, it was horsemen, and they wanted to be close so their kids, they could see their kids, you know, go to school, and, and then they also wanted to be vital in, in the neighborhood, to be able to help the kids when they came out of school, to be able to watch for them, because as you know, Jamison's a really busy street, and they wanted to be there just to kind of help the children across the street here. But their concern is, is that there are so many properties around there that are now in the hands of renters, and they're not being up, you know, taken care of, there's a lot of drugs in the neighborhood that he's, that he says he's aware of, he see the transactions all the time. And so, he asked me, he said, "What can we do?" He says, "We, we do not want to move, we've been here forty-three years, we've got a lot of money invested in our property, you know, we've made it," they have additions on the back of their house, they have a nice patio, it is, their, it's landscaping, it's beautiful, it is a beautiful home right there in the corner here. And, and I really didn't have any answers for them, you know, they said they contacted people, and people gave them two choices, either sell your property to Fisher, or leave. And to me, that, that was very insensitive to a couple that, that is paying their taxes, they're keeping their property up, they're doing everything that they should be as a good citizen, and for them to be given an answer to just sell your property and move someplace else? I mean, our property tax is already base, is already declining as it is, there's, there's very few homeowners, you know, and then the ones that are in the neighborhood, I mean, they're, they're rentals, and, you know, then the, the homes are dilapidated. I'm just saying this just to say that we need to make this priority, you know, as, as city administrators, as council members, because pretty soon, Lima's going to be nothing but, but in certain areas of town, it's going to be plighted areas. You know, we're going to have people getting so upset with not having anyone be concerned about their concern about keeping their property up and those around it, that they going to just get fed up and leave. And pretty soon, there's not going to be anybody in Lima, there's not going to be any taxes being paid for schools or anything. And so, I believe that they're, this needs to be on the top of our list, you know, as far as trying to figure out, what do we do about the different homes in town that the owners are hard to contact, they are, they're linking on their taxes, I mean, they're not keeping their property up, and property maintenance is doing all they can to keep up these properties, cutting any grass, but some of them are so invested with animals, that it's, it's going to be really, really ridiculous. And so, I, I had concern for this, this family, because the same concern was voiced by a couple on Cable Road. And they're in a, in a very popular area, a home, a, a road that's filled with really nice homes, but right beside this one couple's home, and they've been there too almost forty-some years, is a home that is not being taken care of, it was abandoned by the owners. Right now, is in legal dispute, divorce between couples, but the home, the grass is not kept up, there's animals there, the back door is open, and so anything is, can go in and out there. And again, the same question, what can we do? It brings our property value down, we're doing all we can to keep our home looking immaculate, and they are, their home is beautiful, their home is beautiful, but it sits beside property that is not being maintained. And so, I just want to put a seed in, into the administrators, and I know they're probably doing something in the city council, this needs to be our priority. Plight is going to take over Lima, there's not going to be anybody living in Lima, they're going to be living on the outside of the city, if we don't do something quickly. Most of the homes in Lima, especially on the south side, east side, and pretty much all over town, are pretty old homes. You know, a lot of the original owners, you know, they, they purchased their homes, they raised their kids, and now their kids are gone, and they're just there themselves, and a lot of them, you know, like to be able to stay there, they don't want to move, they've been there all their life. And so, if not the land bank manager, what? What do we put in place as a city to help these owners that are lower body, that are taking care of their property, they're, they're paying their taxes, they're doing everything that they're supposed to do, and they can't get help? They cannot get help from anybody, they're crying out for help. They don't want to move, they don't want to go outside of Lima, they love Lima, they've been there all their lives. And so, I just want to say, it has to be a priority. Last thing is, I had my classroom reunion this weekend, and it was my mm-hmm year. So, we, we had a lot of people coming here. We had many of our classmates come in to Lima, many of them had not been in Lima for probably twenty years, because we have not had a family, had a classroom reunion in a long, long time. And so, many of them were graduates of South, South High School. My husband, who graduated from South, who went to South, most of the people he knew, because most of, everyone that were there went to South School. And I, I lived on the east side of town, so how, I didn't know how anybody, you know, but he knew everybody. But one of the young ladies, she told me, she said, "Anne," she says, "I went back to look at the house where I was raised, and it was on Fairview." And she says, "Anne, I went out there, and I just cried." To see the house that I was raised up in, to see the, the community in which I, I lived until I went, till I graduated from high school, she said, "Anne, I cried, and I just left there." So, again, you know, and, and I know she didn't expect it to look the way she, she did when she left here nineteen years ago, but every area of town is going through that, and plight is contagious. Pretty soon, it just goes right down the road, one, one, one house, the next house, it just, it's contagious. And so, we, you know, if we love Lima, like we say we do, all parts of Lima, north, south, west, east, we have to deal with the plight. People are coming in who have not been here, and that's the first thing they say, "Why are there so many dilapidated homes? Why are there so many just, you know, it just rundown homes and buildings in Lima?" And so, again, you know, I, I know it's not an easy task, but I say it's something that should be top on our priority list to deal with the plight, because Lima is slowly decaying in certain areas, and we don't want to have a ghost town, and everybody moving to the outside of town, just to be able to have a decent home. Just, I just, I just thought I'd, I would share that, because it, it really, it really hit home, because my mom is the same way, she lived in her house for years, and one day, she's going to have to, you know, move out of there, but for right now, you know, her home over there on Tremont is not bad here, but I can see the potential of people, the, the original owners moving out, and the same thing happening to her neighborhood, so. Secondly, I just want to thank the mayor and the police chief for initiative that they're starting here. They, they realize that the situations that are happening in town with the drug activity, with the so-called gangs, which I don't, I don't believe they're gangs, I think they're just a bunch of kids that are just out there, you know, being a part of a group of kids. And, but the, the gun violence and all that is going on, that we need the help of the community. And so, the mayor and, and chief police, Martin, have been visiting the churches, and they visited our church probably a, a week ago, I believe, and they just, you know, made, gave a brief, a brief overview of what they were trying to do, that they're trying to build relationships with the black communities, and, and they did a really good job, and a lot of people, when they left, they would say, you know, "That's the first time I've really seen, I have seen the chief, or have seen the mayor." So, i- it's a way of building relationships. You know, we cannot continue to, to stay in our, in downtown, and stay in our little, own little areas where we're comfortable at, and expect the relationships in Lima to, to improve. We've got to get out and mingle with the people that we're trying to build relations, they need to see us, to see that, you know, that, you know, that we are real people, and, and that, and that we want to be a part of whatever they're dealing with, or whatever they're trying to, to do in Lima. So, I really appreciate this initiative by the mayor, because they could very easily sit in this building and talk about ways that, that we can build relationships in Lima, but they are actually doing something about it, they're going out in the community, and they are dwelling among them. You know, if you want to know people, you have to dwell among them and be a part of where they're at, and where they hang out at, so I appreciate their initiative. And last thing, the Westgate Neighborhood Association is meeting on August twenty-first at six thirty P M. at Chamberlain Hurry Funeral Home. The speaker for the month will be Gerald Burton, who is the Lima Allen County Council on Aging Representative. All are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. I don't have anything this evening, so.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that city council adjourn until August twenty-second at seven P M. in these chambers.
Second.
Motion, the second, is the Lima City Council adjourn until seven P M. on August twenty-second in these chambers. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved, and we are adjourned.